Tom Mackin, this is the Perrysburg City Council meeting for March 16, 2021. And I will ask Clerk of Counsel for a roll call.
Okay, Ms. Warren.
Here.
Mr. Coolman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy is not here. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you were able, please join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
President of Counsel, minutes of March 2nd.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we actually have two minutes here to go over, so I will look at doing those here separately. We had the public hearing that occurred on March 2nd at 6:22 PM, hearing that there is no objections. I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the public hearing for the City Council of March 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, Ms. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we also had the actual council meeting minutes as well, and I have not heard of any concerns on this. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2021. It's written and dispensed with the readings.
Second.
With the second roll call.
All right, Ms. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have no special reports today. Letters, communication, and citizens' concerns should be your...I know you're here, Dave. Why don't you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and state your issue. Kind of give a...usually have people three to five minutes, is that all right?
Okay, yes.
All right.
Hopefully five. Dave Kinsel, I'm the owner of the shops at River Place. And I have Gene Hartline from the engineering firm of Manik and Smith, the traffic engineer who's done all the work for River Place, starting in 1989, and Reed Hoffman from the law firm of Shoemaker, Mook &amp; Kendrick, who gave me some excellent advice. I'd like to have and communicate to you on perhaps ways to address the issue. You've all, I assume, have seen the email I sent you and trying to address the traffic concerns being created by the new Starbucks. I am, like many of yourselves, a layman, and when I first heard about it, we attended the city, or the Plan Commission hearing on it. Walt Churchill was also there because we were very concerned about the movement of the existing curb cut for the Starbucks BP from its current location to a location that was not aligned across from the current and 31-year existing entrance to River Place, but rather misaligned in a way that's in violation of what we consider standard access management. And I know we faced that when I was chairman of the Township Zoning Commission out on Route 20, and it's a very difficult situation. This takes a bad situation and makes it considerably worse. And maybe in complement to Starbucks, they are much different than the Maunpaugh Coffee Shop, and they generate a tremendous amount of traffic, as you might have seen anybody on Dussel Road, anybody on Seacor and Central. So not being an expert, I deferred to Gene and Manik and Smith and reviewed the traffic impact study that was prepared in relationship to that application and on which the Plan Commission made their decision. And I was obviously disappointed. The Plan Commission made a decision in variance to the recommendation of the city's engineer, which said, as we all thought, that attended the hearing, this should be right in, right out only. So anyways, not being a traffic engineer, I had Gene analyze their traffic impact study. I've outlined here a number of things that are disturbing and perhaps a little misleading, disappointing. So the question is, if you were of a same temperament, how do we address the situation? Because I think we're going to have a very difficult situation once that Starbucks, once that BP opens up in terms of traffic and its impact on River Place. So if you have questions, I'll go ahead and defer to Gene to answer those. One of the questions that have been kind of presented to me is, what do we do now? If we feel that this is a dangerous, difficult situation, do we overrule the Plan Commission? No, really can't do that. They're final authority. But I believe we recognize that the Plan Commission is not a group of traffic engineers, not a group of planning experts, and perhaps it's a good time now to go ahead and take their plan, take their unrestricted curb cut, take the expertise of the traffic engineers, and go ahead and recognize this should be right out, right out, right in only. And so anyways, Gene is here to answer any questions you have about her study. Mr. Hoffman has some good ideas on perhaps how to go ahead and allow the Safety Service Director or City Council on his behalf or her behalf to go ahead and allow you to go ahead and proceed and make changes. So, Mr. Hoffman, would you like to address that? And Gene, if you have any questions for Gene and what she wrote up or what I wrote, certainly feel free to ask them.
Good evening, Gene Hartline with the Manik and Smith Group.
Good evening.
Can I just make a few quick points, though?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, sure, go right ahead.
So I do a lot of traffic studies, been doing it a long time, in all over Ohio as well as Michigan. I've done work for the city of Perrysburg before on different traffic projects over the years. So a couple of main things in the traffic study that were concerning, and Dave alluded to one, is when you look at a Starbucks, they create more traffic, they've got a great business model, there must be something in their coffee that makes you keep going there, that they generate more traffic than the average coffee place. And the study was based on an average coffee place. And I provided a graphic in my report that shows the difference of where Starbucks would fall in that data scatter versus the average rate line. The other thing is that this traffic study completely neglected to study the River Place drive, even though that drive is almost directly across from them, and the impact that has with all the maneuvers of traffic, both on Echol Junction and both of those drives. And that should be looked at. The other thing is, in a traffic study, we normally do what we call left turn lane warrants. It's a standard procedure. Everyone uses them throughout the state. And it wasn't looked at, Starbucks wasn't looked at for left turn lane going westbound at Echol Junction into their driveway. So what I did is I put together a simulation, there's a clip from that in this report, which is similar to what was done for the traffic impact study. And what I found was in the simulation is that the left turns, turning out of through movement of Echol Junction, will actually back up into the State Route 25 intersection in peak hours. And our office is in Maumee at Dussel and Ford. Dave also alluded to that. Where Starbucks went in and the traffic, the left turn traffic, was backing up into the busy Ford-Dussel intersection, and the city had to go in and put posts in so that people couldn't make a left turn in there because of that safety concern. We believe that really a right in, right out is the best thing for that intersection. The city of Perrysburg has fought for a good 15, 20 years on this area of Echol Junction, State Route 25, and really all the way down to Levis, constantly trying to get in front of the traffic congestion. And this is an opportunity to get in front of it before it's a problem. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Okay. If there's no questions to...
I do have one question I'd like to ask Mr. Kinsel, which is unrelated. When you sent us information, and thank you so much for updating us on everything, appreciate it. My question is, why is the city taking down safety signs that have been in place for three years? I was just wondering about that.
I'm bewildered. I'm bewildered in a lot of respects. As a businessman, as somebody who's invested and done the things we've done and with a relationship that I thought I had with your administration, that, and you know, there's the letter I received from Cody, why not a phone call? You know, and why not contact me? And I've got photographs. Here's what really bewilders me, because I would ask everyone here, this is, and I've got copies for you, the picture of the Caterpillar sign and its proximity to the roadway being Echol Junction, right down the street from River Place. And that's allowed to stay. But my signs, and again, I'll let somebody pass these out, you get a sense for how far our signs were. Why all of a sudden I get a letter and I ask for consideration, and in fact, the city comes out in the middle of the winter and takes them down? I mean, to me, it's not a very positive message as a business person, the way I'm being treated, not leave these to be passed out, because it's very clear that the Caterpillar sign is much more dangerous than our sign. And our sign was there for...has nothing to do with the success of River Place. It only has to do with telling customers of River Place coming in that, no, like some shopping centers where you can pull into maybe a service drive and make your way out to the major parking lot, we can't. So we don't want patrons coming to River Place intermixing with the delivery trucks and vice versa. That's why we have similar signs at the main entrance to the main parking lot on 25 and on Echol, so that we don't get semis coming in. And we've had it happen until we put up the signs, and that's a terrible combination. So we put up these signs merely and for the sole purpose to stop people from coming in, again, just the average citizens driving their car back to the service drive where they can't get anywhere. Now, I did hear somebody, apparently the argument, and I consider it a bogus argument, state that, well, there are people parking back there, so the signs aren't doing the job. Those signs have nothing to do with the people that are parking back there. They have to do, again, with the uninformed customer. The cars that are parking back there are the employees of the shops, which we require as much as they can to park back there, so they stay out of parking spaces to serve the businesses. So again, we put them up. They've been there for three years. As you can see, they're a considerably greater distance from the actual pavement and the traffic than what's going on with the Caterpillar sign. I was told the Caterpillar sign was temporary. That's a matter of semantics. That's a game. I mean, that sign shouldn't be there. It's got two stakes in the asphalt, what, two feet from the edge of a two-lane highway, whereas our sign, which is six, seven feet from a divided, separated, limited-access highway, had to go, be taken down by the city. And all we did was ask for consideration. We got a kind of a strong letter from the attorney saying, no, we're taking them down. I just don't understand.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to defer to Mr. ...because I thought he presented to me tonight what I thought was an excellent avenue for City Council in regards to the making of Starbucks right in, right out.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Reed Hoffman, Shoemaker, on behalf of shops at River Place. And as Gene and Dave have talked, you know, there are some concerns as citizens and as neighboring property owners with traffic, and I think other citizens of Perrysburg have known as the growth. And so the question is, if you agree, and we hope that you do based upon the additional information received, to at least vet this issue, to work with traffic engineering to look at this issue, what the Perrysburg Municipal Code provides is that the Director of Public Safety independently has the ability to maintain traffic control devices and to regulate the control of traffic. So that's a city street, and the Director of Public Safety in service has the ability to make those recommendations to council. And just to be clear, whether those recommendations affect, you know, Mr. Kinsel Shopping Center, whether they affect the BP across the street, those are independent. These are safety decisions that are made and implemented for safety reasons. And so that reservation of power that goes to the Director of Public Safety is also reserved to City Council. So City Council independently has the ability, in concert with the Director, or independently, to implement safety measures on city-owned streets. And so we think if you share that concern, and if your city traffic engineer and others share that concern, that there is a path to alleviate that safety issue.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation and your time and coming this evening, and we appreciate you as well as information. I think council has all the information.
Just one last comment.
Sure.
Consistent with Mr. Hoffman, if for instance, and I talked to Mrs. Hartline about it, if for instance, some River Place needed to do something, but we've been there 31 years, and I would hope the right in, right out is effectuated first, but the left end movement off of eastbound Echol Junction is one that doesn't need any restriction at all, because there's plenty of what we call interruptions or platooning of westbound traffic on 25 to make the left turn into River Place. With a right, with the right in, right out for the subject curb cut, even the left turn movement out of River Place has plenty of time because of that platooning and because we sit far enough back from the intersection, there'd be opportunities for people turning left to then choose whether they get in the left turn straight or right turn lane on eastbound Echol Junction. But if your traffic engineer said that left movement out of River Place needs to be restricted, so be it. We're here for the safety of the city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If I can just add real quick, just for council, is if it's council's appetite to have further discussions, I would recommend that we have that sent over to Service Committee for discussion as since, I know we got the email from our law director here today, if anybody had a chance to read that. And I know we've had this conversation before, is once the Planning Commission does make that decision, those decisions are final. We can't overrule those at this point. There are remedies in place, but those timelines have expired. What I would recommend, if there is any conversation we want to have, we have that at service in regards to the safety of the road.
Okay.
So if there's an appetite to do that, I would suggest that. I don't know if the council wants to have the conversation continued, but if we do, I would suggest we do it at that committee.
Mr. Smith, I would say that in fairness to Mr. Kinsel, I think it would be good to continue the conversation.
I have some questions I'd like to have answered at service.
I see a lot of head nodding, so I would assume, and I'm looking at our chair of our Service Committee, to hopefully have that on the either the next agenda or the following month's agenda.
And I would just add, I mean, Mr. President, that we brought this before the Safety Committee, and I do think we need to know what the remedy is.
Mm-hmm.
So that we're prepared, so hopefully the Service Committee can take that topic up.
Very good. Thanks.
I would enjoy attending, and I will supplement what I sent you with the information I learned from Mr. Hoffman, because I think it does give an avenue.
Yeah, so if council's going to take it up, which it sounds like it is, let's make sure we give Mr. Kinsel notice of the meeting so he can participate fully. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other citizens wanting to speak? Hearing none. Ms... Administrator reports, I would just briefly say, we've, as we put out on public social media, we're in the process of making sure that we can get the pool open, and how we're going to do that is still a little unclear, but we're working on that. We've also anticipate one of the things that we're trying to do is be more transparent, and so we've got, council members should have received it, and we're going to send it out to the public in the near future, a kind of annual report as to what we did, how we did it, and where your tax dollars went. So we hope to have that in the relative near future. I have nothing else to report. City Administrator?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the same vein as the mayor was mentioning regarding opening up the pool, we are currently working with a variety of our civic groups, I'll say, Downtown Perrysburg, Inc., the CBB, the Chamber, et cetera, so that they can start hosting events for city residents and visitors alike again. So we're putting measures in place through agreements with them, as well as working with our neighbors, City of Maumee, on how we can facilitate the fireworks for this year. So we're moving forward with those, as well as working with many youth sports organizations on allowing them back onto city fields for soccer, rugby, lacrosse, baseball, et cetera.
Thank you. I would also note that at the current time, like you can't have St. Patrick's Day parade tomorrow, which is a shame, but the veterans are having a memorial service on Memorial Day, which has kind of been at the end of the parade. There's been no real discussion at this point regarding whether anyone would be allowed to have a parade, but we do know the veterans are planning to have the memorial service, which is a very moving service, at the, at Fort Mick's Cemetery on Memorial Day. We'll have more information about that when it comes. Finance Director?
Okay, I have no report, but I would like to take a moment and thank all the council members for their kind words last meeting and for their efforts to keep me involved in this organization. Your support and your respect are very much appreciated. When Councilman Smith approached me with the idea of staying on as Clerk of Council, the idea appealed to me because I thought it was a good way to continue to stay involved in this organization without getting in the way of the changes that the current administration wants to implement. It's very gratifying to hear the support from each of the council members at the last meeting. But I want it to be known at this time that I do not intend to accept the offer to stay on as Clerk of Council. The main reason for this is that if I do stay on, I will be forfeiting access to money provided by PERS to pay for my health insurance in retirement. Essentially, this would mean I'd be working for free, or at least very little. And yes, I have contacted PERS, and no, there's nothing that we can do legislatively or otherwise to remedy the matter. So once again, I want to thank all the council members for your support and your trust in me. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Dave, can I say once again that I hate to see you leave. I think you do a great job, and I don't have to say how well-respected you are in the community, and you really are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave. I think we all agree on how well-valuable you are, have been and are to the community. Law Director?
I would request if one of the members of council would make a motion for an executive session, please. We have a piece of litigation.
I'll make a motion that we move to executive session on grounds of pending or imminent court action.
A second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to mention that since this is about the law director informs and it's about the property at 401 West Second Street, I will recuse myself from the executive session because I have a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much, Ms. Warren. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Warren, this is just, you can vote to go into executive.
Oh, yes.
Well, no, I think you have to abstain.
Abstain, abstain. I'm sorry, abstain.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll go if you want me to.
All right, come on down.
Why, why, why? I never know anyone.
Yeah, come on down. If you want to go by me, I'll be right now. So first things, is that basically what you're saying?
No, it's just, I kind of come. I kind of come. We never...
Oh, yeah. You got like two months, you're not allowed to do.
Well, that's still...
Oh, is it?
Yeah. But we're going to do a very changing... There's a... 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 Howdy. Hi, Mr. Kinzel.
I leave my head.
Uh-oh. Well, don't leave your head.
Thanks.
Looks like it's attached. Well, I just, I had to ask the question because I didn't understand.
I don't understand.
Yeah.
I'm still bewildered.
Yeah, I see. So, that's why I asked. So, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I just didn't get it. And I just.
I didn't either.
And, and everything's going on.
Yeah.
All, you know, fighting to keep my, my restaurants alive, struggling with all this.
By the way, I've noticed that everything has been, everything where you're at has been standing there.
Yeah.
Even through COVID, so I was going to say something to you about that, because I noticed that, because I go out there a lot.
We just finally got the call from one of those, started really hard, hit it, Hallmark.
Oh, no.
And the worst hit, believe it or not, is Bella Air Cleaners.
Oh, no, I go there too.
Because she said, nobody's getting anything done.
Oh, no.
And I just told her, don't worry about it.
That's awfully nice of you.
She's a sweetheart.
Oh, she is, yeah, does a great job too.
And she was, said, you know, you're not that big of a space for one thing.
Yeah.
I understand what you're going through, just said, I said, don't even, pay the CAM.
Yeah.
And I said, that, that pays my taxes, it's not money to me.
Yeah.
But don't even worry about it.
Yeah.
So, I meet with her tomorrow, because the guy from Hallmark called me yesterday. He said, you're my first call. He was really, he said, you've been the most understanding landlord I've got, and he's got 12 landlords.
Wow.
And he said.
Nice.
You're getting a check for $22,500 from me tomorrow.
Wow.
Because I just said, don't worry about it.
Wow.
But you know, you're going through all this.
Well, yeah.
And obviously, I got this one.
Oh, yeah, COVID is tough.
Is that a joke? You're really concerned about?
I didn't understand, yeah, that's why I, you know.
And that's when I called him and said, you know what? Why don't I just give you a sign? Make it your sign, you own it.
Yeah.
And you know what? It's, you know, don't worry about it.
Mm-hmm.
You can have the sign, but you know, I'm doing it there to help all of us.
Mm-hmm.
We won't take the sign, you need to take it now.
Oh, wow.
I got better things to fight.
Yeah, I remember, thanks for updating us, because I think you sent us several emails, because I didn't understand all of it, but.
When you figure it out, call me.
Yeah, I mean, that's, but, so, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
We'll see what happens. What Reed told me, I thought was very promising.
Which one was he, the gentleman back here?
Yeah, because he showed me in the hallway. He said, you understand that the Safety Service Director or City Council on his behalf can go ahead and literally do this independently.
Oh, wow.
And I said, yeah, because everybody's scared to death about voter rolling.
Ah, that's interesting. Well, I learned something there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are they done?
No, they're in executive session. Thank you, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm assuming so.
That was the quickest one I've ever seen.
I go the short way.
Oh, you do? Okay.
It's much quicker to go up the front.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
It's the quickest you guys have ever done.
Uh, yeah.
I'll talk further about that.
Okay, cool. Sounds great.
Do I need to make a motion to come there?
Jonathan, I, I tend to address.
I don't know, I definitely.
What I pointed out to you, she said she was going to talk about.
All right.
I'm not going to fight it.
What? I'm sorry.
More than five minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, well. That seemed like the quickest ever, I remember, so.
I'll go ahead and move that we return from executive session.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Here, or yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I would like to introduce Resolution 212021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Abstain.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, and this is, okay, wait a second.
Hold, we were having something wrong, because it's Resolution 21.
Resolution?
Resolution.
I don't think I have a Resolution 21.
I was looking through.
Oh, thank you very much.
The ordinance is the same number.
David Smith.
This is most helpful. Okay.
That's the original, so.
Okay, well, okay, Resolution Number 212021, a resolution authorizing a settlement agreement between the City of Perrysburg Council, City Council, and Perrysburg Heritage LLC and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 21-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
I second.
Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Abstain.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Finance and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mayor. There, I have no report, um, no meeting, but it is time to introduce third reading for the amended budget. So, having said that, I would like to introduce Ordinance 8-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its third reading by number and title only.
Second, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 8, 2021, amending Ordinance Number 22, 2020, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021 and declaring an emergency.
I move that Ordinance 8-2021 be passed.
Mr. Mayor, I have discussion.
We need it as an emergency.
Yes.
As an emergency, thank you.
Second, discussion.
Yes, I have discussion, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to vote no on this ordinance because I believe that the budget includes many unnecessary items. Taxpayer dollars in this critical time should be spent on the basics, which are police, fire, sanitation, infrastructure, maintenance, and recreation programs. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Mayor, I do not have a report as President of Council.
Oh, excuse me, the next, the next Finance Committee meeting is April 13 at 5:30.
Sorry about that, President of Council, although I would like to thank all Council for your suggestions of many of the amendments to the budget. You will know we're, as a result of Council's suggestions and then having gone through the administrative review, so we appreciate your efforts to make sure tax hours are spent wisely. I appreciate that. The Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but our next scheduled meeting, if necessary, will be on March 23 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a report, and before I get into my report, I have a couple of announcements I wanted to make after, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. The Perrysburg City Council Recreation Committee report for regular meeting of March 9, 2020, 2021. Present were Chairwoman Born and Counselor Jonathan Smith. Chairwoman Born called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM in council chambers. After a roll call in the pledge and pledge of allegiance, Chairwoman Born reported that since committee member Jan Matroni was not present due to illness, a voting quorum of two was not present. Present, the chair cannot vote except to break a tie, so approval of the administration's report on February 9th meeting will be deferred until the committee's next meeting in April. Mr. Smith stated that he was agreeable to deferring to this, but would prefer that the report be approved now. Chairwoman Born responded that the Robert's Rule of Order does not permit this. Citizen Concerns. Carol Shepherd, 270 Southwood Drive, was present as a representative of the Perrysburg Area League of Women Voters. She stated that the League of Women Voters has heard about the plan for an inclusive playground at Rotary Park. They think that this is an excellent idea and would like to know how they can support it financially. Under old business, Chairwoman Born reported that she had received further information on a West Side handball court possibly in Riverside Park, including design plans and written descriptions. The material had been submitted to her by a citizen, Mr. Al Reva, who had originally proposed the plan. She also brought copies to distribute to other committee members, which they can review at their convenience. Ms. Born added that the handball requires minimal equipment and is not dangerous. She believes that this is a feasible option that provides exercise and fun for all ages. Also, there are several league items in the Northwest Ohio region. Based on official dimensions, a one-wall outdoor court would cost about $10,000 to $15,000. Under the PrAC report, Chairwoman Born reported that PrAC did not meet in March. Their first meeting of 2021 will be in April, and she will have a report on the April Recreation, I should say, at the April Recreation Committee meeting. The report ended at 6:37 PM. Regular meeting, the regular, next regular meeting will be April 13, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Report prepared by Deborah Al Born, Chairwoman, March 14, 2021. And I'd like to have a couple, couple announcements. One is, I would like to report that since I spoke to Carol Shepherd after the meeting and informed her of the proper procedure of donating to the inclusive playground, checks may be made out to Wood County Plays and sent to the Wood Lane Foundation, 1921 Gypsy Lane Road, Bowling Green, Ohio, and made out to Wood County Plays. I should say, I should say Wood County Plays. Also, I received after a meeting a communication from legal counsel regarding the powers of the committee chairs to vote and make motions. I will now read it. Henceforth, the procedure will be used at future Recreation Committee meetings. You all should have received a copy of this. Is it true that the president can vote to only break a tie? No, it is not true that the president can vote to only break a tie if the president is a member of the voting body. He or she has exactly the same rights and privileges as all members have, including the right to make motions or to speak and debate and vote on all questions. So, in meetings of a small board where there are not more than a dozen board members present, and in meetings of a committee, the presiding officer may exercise these rights and privileges as fully as any other member. However, the impartiality required of the presiding officer of any other type of assembly, especially a large one, precludes exercising the rights to make motions or to speak and debate while presiding. And also require, also, also requires refraining from voting except when the vote is by ballot, whenever his or her vote will affect the result. And I believe the question was asked to me before City Council, our City Council meeting this evening, if, if a quorum is two, and yes, it is a quorum of two, and if you have the quorum of two, you can vote. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who, the statement you just read, that was from legal counsel, who is the attorney? From legal counsel, who is the attorney?
Uh, would you like to speak with him?
I'd like to know who it is.
Uh, do I need to say that?
Big pardon?
Do I need to tell you?
You just read the statement written by someone.
Right.
You're not gonna tell us who wrote it?
Who my attorney is? Why do I need to discuss who my attorney is?
The way you said it, I had the impression you meant legal counsel for the city, so you're saying.
No, I said my legal counsel. It's my legal counsel. My legal counsel.
Okay.
So, this is, to be clear, this is not the recommendation from?
My legal counsel.
Legal counsel. It is not, has no binding effect. It is an opinion from...
It is a recommendation from my legal counsel.
Okay. And you're not gonna tell us who that is?
Why do I need to do that?
So that we know who it is. Yeah, well, okay. We'll make a public records request. You read it here, counsel. You'll have a public records request in the morning.
I can certainly tell you, then. If it's so important for you to know, his name is Steve Keller.
Steve Keller. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Planning and Zoning.
Um, we have not met, Your Honor, so no report. We meet on March 24 at 5:30 P.M.
Thank you. Personnel. Thank you. Uh, go ahead and read the report here from our last meeting. Uh, last meeting was March 11, 2021. Uh, present were myself, Tim McCarthy, Mark Weber, Bridget Cabot, Kate Sandretto, and Kelly Chalpont. Uh, we approved the minutes, reviewed proposed repeals for Section 266 of the Administrative Code. The committee discussed the proposed legislation that was distributed at the last meeting. The legislation would repeal Sections 266.10-1 through 266.10-7 and 266.10-10. Most of the items are addressed in collective bargaining agreements or in the employee handbook. Ms. Sandretto said that Section 266.10-5 codifies pre-employment physicals, and if someone doesn't do the pre-employment physical, then we just don't hire them. Uh, she added that it address, uh, it is addressed in the employee handbook. Mr. McCarthy said that he would prefer that the legislation be changed to indicate that it's in the handbook. There was a brief discussion about drug testing. The committee agreed 3O to recommend approval of repealing the sections with the change previously noted. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead, and I would like to introduce ordinances 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 of the year 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dis... Am I dispensing with the second, third read?
Yes.
And dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Housen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 19, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-1 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 105, 1991 on November 5, 1991. Ordinance number 20, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-2 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 123, 2015 on December 15, 2015. Ordinance number 21, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-3 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 105, 91 on November 5, 1991. Ordinance number 22, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-4 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 105-91 on November 5, 1991. Ordinance number 23, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-5 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 105-91 on November 5, 1991. Ordinance number 24, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-6 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 66, 2019 on December 17, 2019. Ordinance number 25, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-7 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 173, 2006 on August 1st, August 1, 2006. And lastly, ordinance number 26, 2021, repealing codified ordinance Section 266.10-10 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code previously enacted by Ordinance Number 105-91 on November 5, 1991.
Okay. I will move that ordinances 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 of the year 2021 be passed.
Second.
Discussion.
One question I'll add real quick is I know that, uh, Councilman McCarthy had asked about it being referenced in the handbook. I didn't see that necessarily on the ordinances themselves. Is that something that'll just be mentioned once those re...
If you look at...
Is it the whereas I missed right on there?
Your copy of ordinance...
266.10-5.
I don't know. I read it this afternoon. It looked fine, but...
The second whereas I missed.
The second whereas.
Okay. Is this on the whereas? Okay.
Now the same.
Okay.
On one of them, the one that involves, um, drug, drug testing prior to appointment, I had put a different language, and Tim just wanted to do, do the same for all of us.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Which was not a problem at all.
Okay. I just wanna clarify. Thank you.
Yeah. That's ordinance 23.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay. Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Van Housen.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. In other business, Mr. Weber moved to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official that was seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Uh, we went into executive session at 10:14, uh, came out at 6:49 P.M. on a motion from Mr. Weber, and then the meeting was adjourned. I will say that I know we went through a lot of ordinances tonight. That may be a common theme, theme as we're going through the code, trying to clean some things up, so that we... What we're doing is preventing future conflicts between our code and collective bargaining agreements and handbook provisions. So, that's what you're hearing. Just wanna make sure that's clear, if that was confusing for anybody. Our next regular meeting is gonna be Tuesday, April 27, 2021 at 5:00 P.M. Nothing further.
If I can just add something real quick. Um, I know there was some conversation about possibly going to an executive session here tonight. Uh, unfortunately, as we all heard at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Krebs is not going to be looking to go for retire, rehire at this point due to financial concerns from PERS. Um, one of the things I would like to ask the Personnel Committee is to continue to explore and eventually create a separate position for the Clerk of Counsel. I think that that is going to be an important piece moving forward. Uh, and I know that, I think one thing that I did take out of some of the conversations that we had, that it would be beneficial, um, at least from that night in the Personnel Committee, that, that's something we should definitely explore and see if it makes fiscal sense for the city.
What I might propose is, since this will be a position for Counsel, perhaps that should be a coun... Oh, this is Corey Coolman talking. Since this is gonna be a position for all of Counsel, uh, that we might be considering separating the, uh, the Director of Finance, which now assumes the role of Clerk of Counsel, I, I think it might be appropriate to do a committee of the whole on that, potentially in the future as it gets closer.
I think as we get a little closer, we're looking to actually make a hiring decision. I think that that would be important. Uh, I, I'm actually competent, uh, confident in everyone on the Personnel Committee, um, to, to work hard on this, to do, to find the right wording on this. And it'll come back here to Counsel as a whole for us to have a conversation anyway, so...
And you're talking about to make it happen before the end of June, correct?
We would definitely wanna look at getting everything resolved by the, the final June Council meeting.
Wouldn't the administration need to know sooner so they can, um, talk about the wage range for the, um, incoming Finance Director? Uh, that, if that's gonna be something that's taken out of there, please?
So, if I understand correctly as well, um, I, I know that, uh, Councilman Coolman has asked to do a wage study for all these different positions, and I think that that's gonna be part of this. I think eventually what we're gonna be looking to do is combine the both wages together. We're not in any urgent need to do this necessarily by June. We could always appoint a temporary Clerk of Counsel as, and continue things along, per se. But there is gonna be some questions on the, the cost and the wages of combining those two positions moving forward.
I would just say that the administration anticipates that, as it currently is set up, we're doing this, the ranges so that the new person will be hired in that range, and the expectation would be that that would be in the range anyway regardless of the duties for...
Finance.
For, well, for finance or adding the clerk duties as part of that, those functions, so...
I see. Okay.
He said what I was gonna say.
Okay. I think so that, that incoming Finance Director is gonna, would be that same range whether they're gonna do those duties or not? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then we still have... Where's the money come from?
If you create, if you create a position... Then there will have to be discussion about putting a line item in the budget and amending the budget and appropriating funds for the general fund for that position.
Counsel would be creating a position, and it would be counsel that would be elking resources from the budget for that purpose.
I would say we're, the positions technically already created, and there's a line item already there. It's just a better making sure that the funds make sense.
The funds are there, right.
Uh, what I would see, though, is, is this is a half a year. Who knows when we're gonna find the, the person to fit it anyways? So, the cleanest way to do it is to have everything ready before June, but that's not always practical.
Well, it's good to know we don't have to rush into it.
Yeah.
I have one more. Do we have any update on the wage, uh, study? Since we're on the topic somewhat? Cause I, I think all these are kind of together.
No, we currently do have a draft document from Zashin and Rich, and what we're doing right now is we're spot checking it for, essentially for the positions that are very similar in certain ways but different, such as Public Utilities Director, the Deputy Director, Director of Public Service, Deputy Director, and Wastewater Treatment Plant Manager. Because when you look across the other jurisdictions, sometimes they call it a Public Works Director, but that refers to service. In our world, sometimes it refers to utilities. Sometimes it's both combined. So, we're going through and reevaluating, um, what they put together from the various jurisdictions to make sure it's an apple to an apple as much as possible. So, we're just going through and doing that right now. Utilities Director is actually working on that.
And then is your plan to present, and I know I've said this multiple times, but I don't get, necessarily get to dictate what you present to Personnel, but are you guys putting together a plan or a proposal of what you'd like to see for the department heads?
Yes.
Across the board?
Correct. And, and some of the product is already in that format.
Yeah.
That we're receiving in the draft format. They have provided a recommendation, an initial recommendation on how they see banding of various positions into, into groupings, into categories. So, we're also reviewing that as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing further on Personnel.
I'd like to direct this to both, uh, Councilman Coolman, this is, this is Councilwoman Born, and, uh, President Smith. Do you know if this would be a full-time position for this position that you're looking at?
I believe it would still be looked at being a part-time position unless we find that there's gonna be a different need.
I'd like to see it become a position where they are, like Dave has already been doing, but even more so they advise Counsel if need be on issues, some kind of thing.
I think that, and I'll address that. I think the general idea with this Clerk of Counsel is to create somewhat of a separation between City Council themselves and the administration, and, uh, that person would, you know, I don't wanna say they're necessarily administrative assistant, but, um, that's, it's gonna be a resource more for Counsel than it is for the administration.
Right.
The way we're looking at it, so...
Right. And I understood, and I understood the whole time where Dave has been here, you know, he's been a reference. If I have questions, I've been able to ask him from the beginning.
Right.
So, I'd like to see that for Counsel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be exploring that.